To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment's silence. Very much.
Our first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the March fourteenth meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from billing services is approval of items to be auctioned per personal property disposition policy. Item five from the county auditor is approval to hire outside counsel, Brian Young, to assist with the forming of the Salix Drainage District. Item six from myself is approval to clarify rule number seven of the board's rules for public participation with the following language, quote, "Public comment by electronic or telephonic means is prohibited except for a particular agenda item when approved by the chair twenty-four hours before a meeting or by a majority of the board during a meeting for a subsequent meeting," end quote. Item seven from human resources includes A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions, and B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item eight from secondary roads is approval of the underground utility permit for long lines and to direct the chair to sign the permits. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Item nine from Siouxland Mental Health, Nicole Eaton. For action is to authorize the chairman to sign letter of support for Siouxland Mental Health Services. Is Nicole here? Okay, this is a letter of support request. Obviously, funding is from outside the county at this point, and I think it does go along with the mission of Siouxland Mental Health, so if there's no questions or concerns about it, I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Second by Taylor. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Item ten, submitted by human resources, is approval of the collective bargaining agreement with CWA deputy sheriffs for the three-year term 2023 to 2026.
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director, and I'm here for the board to approve the contract between the county and the CWA deputy sheriffs. This is going to be a three-year agreement with the third year being a wages-only opener. I've added, attached the new contract onto the agenda item, and the other provisions are bolded in the contract. Let's start the new items. Any questions?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Second by Taylor. Any discussion from the board? All right. Thank you, Mr. Binger, for being involved in the process as well with me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item eleven from Siouxland District Health, Kevin Green. For action is approval and authorization for board chair to sign the purchase agreement with Spec Pro, Inc. for the completion of skylight maintenance work for the building located at 1014 Nebraska.
All right, Kevin Green, Director of Siouxland District Health Department. What included in your packet was just some three pieces of information. One is actually a letter from an inspection service related to the condition of the current skylights exists. Number two is an actual formal inspection report that they performed last fall, which indicated that the forty-seven-year-old sort of skylights now are probably at the end of what they consider their useful life. And then the last component is the purchase agreement that they had submitted to us related to doing this work. And so, for those items is what it is. I guess what we're looking at is they are not leaking yet, but with the condition that they're in, we don't want that to start as far as interruption of services and availability for that. I think probably one of the other pieces in, in looking at this is the timing related to this, is that the reason why we're looking at putting into this, this year's CIP, is because they need to order materials, and like everything else, there's a forty-four to five-month lag before they'll actually receive the materials, and then they would look at potentially doing and completing the work this fall. So it would be August to September, sometime in there. So I'd entertain any questions from board members?
Yeah.
Was this already in the CIP?
It is in sixty-seven thousand, but we have other funds that will be unused and we can cover this cost.
Right. We had another sprinkler CIP in there that we dropped. They determined it wasn't necessary for that type of work to be done.
How many contractors bid on this?
This was the only one we found that did and would bid.
How many did you send out to?
I'd have to talk with Tom. I think he's tried to contact with three, and this was the only one that responded, but I can verify that.
It seems odd that, you know, only an Omaha company, is that right?
Yes.
That was my concern too, Supervisor Raddick too. Yeah, there's only, how many bids were there? Also, Dennis, help me out with that performance bond. Shouldn't that be on the contractor? Right, should, do we have to incur that cost?
Yeah, on normal work, the contractor has to form, provide a performance bond because that covers them for anything that goes wrong. The county should not be picking this up. So that should be deleted there. Okay. And then, the other question I'd have is, there's a add-to-base bid, thermosten broken frame and grid core. Wouldn't that be included in the total repair? Why would that be broke separate?
That, I think that was when they came back again and took a look. That was something they did originally, given us a dollar amount, and then they added that to what their bid was before. What they had originally is what I understood Tom had told me. So that was just additional work they felt should be done to basically improve the integrity of the windows or the skylight when they're done.
So anything I'd recommend or suggest is delete the bond, performance bond. That's our problem. They should pay that.
Right.
And then otherwise, prove the rest of it, I guess. And we do have CIP funds that will be unused, even with our current borrowing, to cover this cost.
So that's at seventy-four, two thirty-five? Is that, you have to write?
Yes.
So I'd move approval in the amount of seventy-four thousand, three twenty-five, or two thirty-five, rather.
I'll second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Bitteringer. And that was including, removing...
Yes, that was removed with that total.
Removing the performance bond.
Performance bond.
So you're basically having them completely redo skylights, correct?
Right, that's what ends up.
Was there any look or recommendation to take the skylights out completely?
Uh, no, we didn't do that because we weren't sure how that would blend in with the current consist, the roof, is what it was. It changes, I mean, that was, has been redone in the last, I think, seven years. And so, we were to know whether we would create more issues with those removed or not.
I just know most places in the private sector have kind of done away with skylights because, you know, the huge amount of leaks and issues that are caused by just having them.
Well, these have lasted forty-seven years, so hopefully...
Yeah. We're thankful for that.
Any other discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item twelve from secondary roads is approval of the certificate of completion of project Perrin O-102 with Dixon Construction for three hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight and forty cents.
This was a bridge replacement with a box culvert. Work was completed by Dixon in full compliance with the plans and specifications. I recommend approval of the certificate of completion.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Nelson. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Item thirteen from Veteran Affairs is approval of appointment to the Veteran Affairs Commission. Ms. Lonnie Coleman here? Okay, we have an item here that says that the office would be happy with any of the attached applicants. The remainder of the term under consideration is through June 2023. What is the board's pleasure?
Do we have any applicants here to interview?
It doesn't look like it.
Ms. Taylor?
So, we have two, just for the good of the public, TJ Fennell and Zane Shorka. And both, I think, are outstanding applicants, based on both their references and, and the responses and their military service. I happen to know TJ Fennell's service a little more as one of the senior, the most senior enlisted in the Air Guard, and just the way that he's been able to navigate some different soldier and airman issues. And so, I couldn't think of two more even applicants, but just based on, I guess, having had more experience, I would be partial to TJ Fennell. But again, you have two outstanding people that, that are here. So, it's too bad we couldn't choose two.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of any of the applicants? Are you pacing the room, or are you coming up to the...
Yeah, I'm pacing back. I didn't know Zane was up for this, but I will just speak on behalf of Deputy Zane Shorka. I know his dedication, not only to, to the United States through his military service, but to the county as well. As a deputy with the sheriff's office, I see his dedication daily to the community, and wouldn't, I couldn't give him a high enough recommendation for this position based on, based on that, that record and service that I see daily. I know TJ, I agree, great, both great people. But, but I know and work with Zane on a, on a daily basis, so, you know, I would just like to, to recommend, or at least give my recommendation for, for Zane and the great work that he does.
Thank you. Anyone for the other applicants?
So you say TJ has seniority at the Air Guard?
Well, he was the most senior enlisted airman in the Air National Guard. So, I don't, and I just want to be clear, I don't necessarily think that it should be who outranks who or any, and I think Zane would be outstanding as well. So I, kind of a, a rock and a hard place, but as far as the amount of tenure and longevity, that would be TJ. But again, we're sort of, I don't want to say splitting hairs, but you have, it's, it's a hard choice.
Well, they both have great references too, that came back, and also that they listed, so. Anything from you gentlemen?
Aye. You're the only one in the military. I'll second your motion, whatever it is.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I, just based on my knowledge of TJ, I, I would, Fennell and his, his service, I would, I would move on his approval to the Woodbury County Board and Commission.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick to appoint TJ Fennell to the commission. Any other discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you to everyone who applied. Item fourteen from myself, this is approval to set a public roundtable meeting in the, in the basement boardroom of the Woodbury County Courthouse for April seventh at three thirty PM, and invite Iowa's area legislators to attend the roundtable hosted by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury, Plymouth, and Monona Counties. This is a follow-up discussion item, an action item from our discussions during the budget process about how it would be helpful for our legislators to get a better understanding of how the county budgets and how we budget long-term, and how we deal with our tax rate situation long-term as we look at budgets, not just from a annual perspective, but from a long-term planning perspective. So fortunately, it does look like the date that I mentioned, having reached out to the chairs of, of Monona and Plymouth County, work for their respective boards, time and location work. My understanding is, it's a doable time for legislators that get back, you know, late Thursday night typically from session. And the thought process here, and it's open to the board's interpretation, is that this is a, a roundtable because there's going to be communication between, you know, basically just understanding how each other works, and how we can help the state legislators understand what we go through as a county, and how they, and they can update us on things that, you know, what they're thinking with some of the legislation that's been pending, and that has even concerned us in the last session. So, I think this will be a good, good opportunity for the discussion to be focused between county supervisors as a whole, not just Woodbury, but my understanding is that all five of us can make that date and time, so that's wonderful. And I plan to have our, our budget director prepare some sort of presentation on our budget picture and our tax rates, and then really have, you know, for a portion, I'd say the county supervisors could lead discussion, another portion, the legislators could lead discussion. We could really just have a, just a, just a good discussion. It'll be open to the public, of course. I think we certainly have the infrastructure to record, and even livestream if that's available at that time, but the focus would be on, on topics. And I'd like to have an agenda that this board sets, just, just to submit certain topics that we sure, you know, are discussed. That can expand as we discuss, but I think we definitely want to center on some different topics. So that's kind of up to you guys, how we go about that. I'll be in communication with you and, and work to get that out at least a week before the event, so there's some transparency involved, and no one's taken by surprise with, with the topics, so. Open it up to the board for discussion? Yeah?
I, I commend you for the, the format of it, for pulling the other counties in, because I think as counties, we speak better with one voice, and I think it's a laudable goal to have a give and take. I would just say, there are three things, the county board budget and tax implications, whatever ways and means bills are going through either chamber. I would also put on there something on the county districting plan, how each county determines for itself to be able to, to vote on, either by districts or at large, and then the impacts of the use of eminent domain, pipeline issues, and so on. Those seem to me to be the three things that we should have.
And I think, you know, the constituency has ample opportunity to reach us with concerns and reach the state legislators with concerns, but it would be useful for them to see how the two entities interact, and how we actually answer each other's questions and help each other to understand, and if we do walk away with some, some understanding. So certainly, budget issues would be front and center, and the county's perspective on that. Anything from you gentlemen?
No, I, I think everything that Jeremy laid out is exactly what we need to talk about, and I think as far as like the eminent domain with the carbon pipeline, all three of those counties are affected. We're kind of all in the same corridor, in the same thing together, so I think it makes sense to, while they're here, that we discuss that as well. I don't have anything really to add to that list, but I think all, all those things that were mentioned are exactly what we, what we need to cover.
I think we could add regional workforce development boards to it, because what the state has done is destroyed those. There's only two left in the whole state. I think after our region decided to break the twenty-eight E and, and basically disband our board, I think five others followed suit or something. It was, at least three others I know immediately did, and I think there were maybe only seven or eight in the state. So it was quite a bit that over half the county doesn't have a regional workforce development board because of actions by the state, so.
I think it'd be helpful if each one of us five could sort of pick a topic that we'd like to present on and, and work that out amongst ourselves, so that we can, you know, make sure that our focus is unified. And I think it'll be echoed by a lot of the other county supervisors. Looks like we have some comment?
Yeah, just a couple of comments in terms of, as you prepare the agenda and everything else, there's quite a few things going through the legislation this year, particularly with the treasurer's group. And I know that Plymouth County and Monona County are, we're all kind of in the same group, all kind of on the same board. Not that we are asking for a presentation. I know we can attend it because we are going to be, it is a public meeting. But with some of those tax legislations that's out there right now, didn't know if we would just kind of be wrapped in a little bit, even if it's just on the backside, or just kind of having that communication, so that if any one of the board members has questions from, you know, the impact that it has to other offices, you know, just, just to be able to have some of that dialogue there.
Yeah, I would, I would encourage other elected officials or department heads to, if there's not time for other topics, to, to maybe write down your thoughts in a, in a letter to the legislators. As we approve on this board, you don't have to go through the same approval process. You can simply, you know, write something up, and we'll have those at their places, so that, you know, they're used to getting things passed to them by staffers. But I think if we're all, you know, if, if we say, you know, please pay attention to what our, our county's departments have put before you, and what's, you know, their most important issue, I think that'd be, I think that'd get more eyes on it than otherwise. They'd all be aware of it at the same time, so.
I just think that, like I said, there's just a lot of pieces going out there, and they can be very specific to an apartment, a department, but as a county overall, I think that collaboration between us would be a great option for us.
Great.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with this, we would send out invites. I know a lot of them are already aware of it, but we'll do our best to send individual invites out to legislators, and was there any other comments from the board?
I'll move it.
Motion by Raddick, second by myself.
Is there going to be an after-party?
Um...
Can you handle that chair?
Well, I don't know. I think security's going to be gone by the time we're out of here, so, you know, sidewalks are public. We can chat outside. All right.
Sounds good.
Good starting point. We'll see what happens. We'll just hold it as, you know, my plan is all the, you know, the county supervisors, if it works for us, will be here regardless, and whoever can make it can make it, and we'll supply the recording to anyone that can't and is interested, so. All right. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Item fifteen from Deborah Main. For information, this is titled Citizens Concerned About CO2 Pipelines. There's some backup materials in our agenda that was recommended by Deborah, and I'll just give you the floor to explain what you want to do.
All right. Deborah Main, 1026 Charles Avenue. We had an excellent opinion written in the Sioux City Journal last, last week. I don't know if you had a chance to read it, so I'd like to read it to you. It says, while corporate, and this was written by one of our landowners, "While corporate agribusiness is used to getting everything it wants from both parties here in Iowa, they've bitten off more than they can chew with their current scheme to build a statewide network of CO2 pipelines using the state's eminent domain authority. Iowans of all kinds are uniting to defeat them," and of course, I'm one of them, "CO2 developers, a bipartisan who's, who's list of big egg political donors, have used a variety of tactics to try and convince us to sign away our property rights, deception, disinformation, aggressive language, fancy public relations campaigns. But we're not buying what they're selling, nor are the farmers and landowners all over the state. Like many in the proposed path of the pipelines, there are potential risks associated with hazardous pipelines and materials, the tube to be permanently installed beneath the surface of my family's land. Pipelines of all kinds have a track record of spills and leaks despite industry promises, and these C, liquid CO2 pipelines operate under incredibly high hydraulic pressure. A possible spill under these concentrations and pounds of pressure per square inch could be fatal to people, livestock, and wildlife. The public health risk is substantial, especially in rural communities where first responder budgets and healthcare services are limited. A new poll shows that the vast majority of regular Iowans agree, even those who don't own land or live directly in harm's way. The recently released Des Moines Register MediaCom Iowa Poll finds that seventy-eight percent of Iowans oppose these corporate agribusiness pipe dreams. These numbers hold up regardless of political affiliations, age, gender, religion, income, or geography. Across the board, it's clear that a supermajority of Iowans living in cities, small towns, and rural communities understand why this grassroots opposition has been so clear. Not a bit surprised about the poll results, just like the decades-long rush towards the factory farm livestock production and rural crop monocultures. The push for CO2 pipelines is only possible because of a long list of federal subsidies. This agribusiness overreach continues to be exposed and opposed at public meetings, legislative events, with pipelines opponents bringing up all kinds of issues. There are lots of reasons people are fighting the pipelines. Should we, should we be listening to everyday Iowans or pipeline profiteers? The CO2 pipeline cartel is an affront to democracy that is aimed, that is aiming to harass landowners into compliance for massive financial gain. By asking the Iowa Utilities Board to grant them eminent domain authority, they've simply gone too far. Nobody wants to sacrifice their property rights and take on additional risks just so some corporate executives can extract more profit from our land. Fortunately, there is proposed legislation that could help us prevent this disaster in the making. House File 565, that will be debated on the floor of the House tomorrow. So, we have a chance to get the job done and protect the people and places that we love. So, my friend of mine made a show and tell for us. This is where she lives, and this is a neighbor that lives on the Navigator line, and this is where I live up here. So she drew a mile distance from a pipe break at her house, a two-mile, a three-mile, and a four-mile. So with those lines, Summit affects three hundred and eighty-two residences, Navigator affects two hundred and fifteen residents. In Latton alone, it affects three hundred and sixty residents, residences, which means nine hundred and forty people. So the residences also have additional people living. It's just not one person living in the house. So, I did a kind of a kindergarten thing, and this is the two-mile circle. So if you move the two-mile circle down the pipeline, this one is Summit, and you can see where the two-mile radius reaches. So it goes this way, and this way, and this way, and then it starts to get into the corporate Sioux City, and it comes down this way, and this way, and this way. So if you do Navigator, which is on the black line, Navigator comes this way, up this way, and across this way, and this way. So you can see, when it comes to this point here, how close it is to Latton, and that's why they're so concerned about the, oops, I went on the wrong line. This is the red line for Navigator. So the red line goes here, and so Latton is right on top of a pipeline on the northwest corner, and then it goes on up that direction. So you can see what kind of area would be affected by, by the pipeline break. So another thing I mapped was right here, and this is the point where your interchange wants to go through for the new interchange on the interstate. So it's going to be right on top of the pipeline too, which is a, which is a huge concern. So, just some few things I wanted to point out. And the Iowa Utilities Board has proposed a scheduling for the hearing. They want to have the hearing from October twenty-third to January twenty-fourth, which would mean you'd have to, if you're going to have an ordinance in place, it would need to be before that. So there is debate about the scheduling for that conference, but if you'd like a copy of that, I can give that to you.
I move to receive.
I move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Radick to receive for the record. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dicky Hulse from Mauville. And I guess I just have a few questions. Are you being proactive about any ordinances or moratoriums? Or do you have any steps that you're thinking about putting in place about the pipeline? Do you have any actions that you're thinking about?
Well, we are looking at the ordinances and the backup. And I know the board signaled its opposition to use of eminent domain through resolution, as I feel like everyone in the state has. Certainly one of the items we'll put in front of the legislators on April 7th is what exactly are you empowered to do? Because we have more of an understanding of our limitations as a government than I think we understand from the state side, so. Does anyone disagree with that on the board?
Okay, well, PHMSA, who is the regulatory on the pipelines, they are in the process of making more rules and regulations. But they say they're not going to have anything done for a couple of years. And that would be on the pipelines. So could you put in like a moratorium for a couple of years to alleviate, you know, anything that would maybe stop something against the pipeline? To hold back anything against the pipeline until these rules and regulations go forth? So that we at least know what needs to be put in place? Would a moratorium be helpful?
Ms. Taylor.
I mean, have you thought about that?
I think we've thought about it and considered it. I think we would want to know from legal counsel that something like that would hold up. I remember when we were talking about wind and as you may remember, that was a very vociferously debated topic. And there were those who said, you know, go for a moratorium, but that had been struck down in other places. And so whatever we do, we want to make sure that it's going to be legally binding. And so if that's something that the county attorney's office advises us is legally permissible and that will hold up in court and not just entangle this board in a protracted, legal but losing endeavor, it'd be something that I think that we would be open to. But we'd want to have that sound legal advice to be able to have legs to stand on. And so I'm kind of looking over in the direction of our assistant county attorney to the board. But I, I don't, at least from my personal stance, I would not be necessarily against that. I just want to know that we're on solid legal ground before we got into some sort of entanglement.
Is that something that you would check into then?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. That's, that's all the questions I had. But I just wondered if there was, you know, something you were being proactive about.
I, I think short term, there's, there's three things that this board could do. And I, I think one of those is to draft and pass a resolution that we could send to the Iowa Utilities Board, you know, discussing their potential usage of eminent domain for this project. I think that's one. I think two, we could send letters to legislators regarding this, this House file with the 90% threshold for eminent domain usage. And obviously, when those legislators are here on April 7th, we could, you know, we could share those same exact thoughts with the ones that are local. I think a lot of them are already in our corner, but it would be good for us just to, you know, solidify that, you know, that's what we believe. And so I think that second thing we could do is send a letter to our legislators. And the third thing I think we could do as a board is we could ask, or we could pass and draft a letter that we could send to Senators Grassley and Ernst and maybe our four congressmen and women, asking them to put some pressure on, and I'm sorry, the agency, what's the agency that's doing this?
PHMSA.
On PHMSA to try to, to try to, you know, speed up this process of this rulemaking. I, I think it's, in a way, it's not in the best interest of the public to say, oh, we're going to have this rulemaking, but we're going to let these pipelines come in on the 11th hour. I think if there's going to be some drastic safety concerns or changes that they're going to make, I think that some of this stuff shouldn't be moved forward until we know what those are, right? And I don't think there's too much to ask our senators and congressmen to say, hey, let's, let's think of it this way. Let's expedite this thing. Let's figure out what the safety concerns are and then we can formulate a plan and go forward.
And that's the problem, because if these pipelines get the permit, PHMSA is.
What it is currently.
What it is currently, the pipelines can go through without any regulations. And if they do one dig in the ground, they're, they're.
Grandfathered in.
They're grandfathered in. They're, they're a go.
So I, I think those three things we could do, you know, shortly. As far as, you know, I had the, the ordinances like from Shelby and Story County. Those two counties are tied up in litigation currently over those ordinances that they passed. I don't think that it's wise for us to wade into that. If they're already being litigated, I think we let the courts decide that. If it's something that the courts say that Shelby and Story County have the authority to do those types of, pass those types of ordinances, then that's something that we can definitely look at here. I just don't think we want to open ourselves up, kind of like what Jeremy said, to that potential liability of, of also getting into litigation when there's two counties already going through it. I think we have to see what, how that turns out and then that will give us the options either way, if we can or can't do it. And, you know, I think we'll direct the county attorney to look into a moratorium, if it could be a temporary one. While we're looking at safety concerns.
Yeah, I know California's got a 10-year moratorium on, on hazardous CO2 pipelines. So it can be, you know, a long length of time.
And I, I think in getting a response from the county attorney's office, I think we have better legal grounds. This is just my assumption on a pending moratorium, pending the PHMSA rules and regulations rather than an outright, not here, not now, not ever, not in our backyard kind of thing. But again, that would be something that we would ask their legal advice on.
That's, thank you. You, you answered my questions, so thank you.
I think if PHMSA says they're going to take two years, my experience with the federal government is usually two and a half times that, so.
Doyle Turner, 2738 200th Street, Mauville. There's one thing, when Mr. Nelson talks about sending things to the congressman, that I would like to have you add to this. To me, from an economic standpoint, these pipelines are a real tragedy in the fact that this CO2 is a very, very valuable commodity. And we are looking to ship it out of our state with no value added to it. There are techniques and ways to make this into even more valuable commodity that doesn't need to go into a pipeline. In fact, plants are willing to be built at the ethanol plants in order to produce methanol, just as one example. To give you just a little bit of background, what I'd like to have you talk to the senators about is in the Inflation Reduction Act, 45Q is a subsidy to the pipelines. And there's three of them, the pipelines and there's the alternate use businesses, like your methanol plants, and your enhanced oil production, which everybody else knows is fracking. Under the, under 45Q, the sequestration with the pipelines get around $85 a ton subsidy. That is a huge amount of money. The alternate use and the fracking would get between $55 and $60 a ton. This is really a subsidy that fosters taking income away from the states that produce this. We need to add value to everything we make in our state. And our federal government should not be discouraging that. So that's what I would like to add, is I, I think on an economic scale, the pipelines are a disaster for the state. They don't add value to what we have. They don't create jobs here. We can have significant investment within our state, very significant, much more than what the pipelines are worth. And they would create good paying jobs every day of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion points on this? I think as different, as has been mentioned, as different counties pursue different avenues, we're all sort of rooting for the success of the county, the county position and home rule and, and use of our resources and, and protecting our landowners' rights. So we're all remaining watchful at, at the process as a whole, so. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none. Thanks for bringing this forward. Move on to item 16, reports on committee meetings.
Community Action Agency meeting. We had election of officers. Kevin Green got on there. Let's see, what was it? Vice Chair? Secretary, sorry. So we also had a couple of new members and kind of a unique Zoom meeting. I think a few people were in cars and confronted by others while they were sitting in the parking lot, so that was kind of unique. Other than that, business got done.
Supervisor Nelson and I had a good meeting with Barbara Solanicker from the city of Sioux City on RagBri. And just the historic nature of it with 50,000 people coming in, 12,000 riders. And talked about how we can open up the courthouse for tours and also be a conduit for those who are interested in hosting and those in our rural businesses that want to make sure that their goods and services are advertised and, and kind of a back and forth. Also our conservation parks, should they be of interest prior to? And so I believe you'll see a forthcoming agenda item, just informationally. I don't know if you have anything to add, Mark, in terms of that, but.
Yeah, it was a, it was a great meeting. We talked and, and Matt from Sioux City was really great about talking about not only what do the RagBri folks need out of Sioux City, but then we talked about them coming and going from Sioux City. You know, the, the next stop is in Storm Lake, so they're going to be leaving Sioux City, going east on Highway 20. And so we talked about how we can incorporate the rural part of the county and, and have some of those towns able to, to, you know, be host to those, those support staff and support vehicles as they're leaving town. And one thing Matt said right away is he said, well, a lot of those folks, you know, the bicyclists take off first thing in the morning and those supports, those support people are looking for breakfast. They want coffee. They want breakfast. And so I immediately called the Mauville Chamber, their president, talked to him. And he's already going to put together a meeting with several businesses in Mauville that can accommodate breakfast, coffee, that sort of thing. I talked to the mayor of Correctionville the next day, same thing. They have two or three options in town. And so they're going to work on some signage and some marketing that they can do leading up to RagBri. Really, you know, a lot of these folks are going to come down Highway 20 into Sioux City and they're going to leave on Highway 20. So they were very, very thankful for that kind of information. I don't think they would have gotten that same information had it not been for this committee, which I think is exactly what we're here to do, so. More to come.
Good. Anything else? Nelson, anything else?
I had an LEC meeting on Friday. Not much to report there, other than they're, you know, they're staying conscious of us staying on schedule. Make sure that we're, we hit that September 14th deadline and not cost taxpayers any more money than they have to. And then I had a soil, water conservation meeting this morning. And they were just going through some of their equip programs and some, some of the projects that they're funding for the year, which was kind of fun to see some of that stuff that's going on in the county. But otherwise, that's, that's all that I have.
All right. Item 17 is citizen concerns. Are any items not already addressed on the agenda?
Good evening, Sheriff Sheehan. Just wanted to kind of give you a, a little bit of an update, kind of tying into the LEC. We have, we are down to needing to hire nine correctional officers at this point. I will say that, and, and commend you for getting the wages to where they're at right now. It has made a world of difference in the quality of candidate that we have gotten in the last six months compared to what we were getting in the year prior. And, and not, I should say, the volume of the quality of candidates. We were still getting good quality candidates, just not in the volume that we've gotten over the last several months in particular. Where perhaps a year ago, I was more worried about being able to fill, fulfill all those positions. I have very little worry that given enough time, we'll be able to fulfill those, those positions and be ready to hit the ground running as soon as the new LEC in jail is open. I spoke to Dennis earlier today. We are still waiting for the Marshal's Service Headquarters to respond to our request for a new IGA, which is Intergovernmental Agreement. We already have one in place. We've just requested an updated bed rate and, and some other parameters. We had a telephone conference with them last week. I don't recall off the top of my head which day it was. They asked one simple question. I really am not sure why. We haven't received word yet. There was nothing negative at all in our, in our interaction. But as I think Keith alluded to, sometimes with the federal government, it just, it takes time. I, in that meeting, urged them, if they could get us something before that March 28th, next month, it would be great just for the assurance of the public and for the board and, and for us as well to have some, some more solidified numbers. I haven't been able to come to, to meetings for the last several weeks. There's, there's been some reporting that I just want to make some clarifications on. It's been reported, particularly in the Journal, some articles as it relates to the budget. Was talking about cuts that were made in the, in the correctional, in the jails, in the jails budget, in the sheriff's office jails budget. And I just want to make sure that it gets clearly conveyed to the public. There were no cuts made to our jail budget. What happened was we renegotiated a contract with our medical provider and we saved the county $815,000 in the next fiscal year because we refused to accept their initial contract proposal, their second contract proposal, and their third contract proposal. And finally came to an agreement that saved the taxpayers $815,000, which was more than what I think was originally going to be asked to be cut from our budget. So I just want it, you know, understood that because we, we made that effort and are, are continuing to be very, very cognizant of the tax dollars and how important they are, that, that that's where that, that money came from. And I think in all total, it's about $815,000 in savings. We'll find out what the revenue numbers might be hopefully by next week. I don't know for sure. And then the final thing that I wanted to just bring up was the, the contract negotiations with the, with the deputies. And I'm not sure exactly how this could or couldn't work in the future. But one of the things that, that came to mind after I saw the numbers that were, that were agreed on, I'm not sure if there's a, a way that in the future, if the numbers that the board has in their mind, when you settle all that out, if there's a way, and not just for our contracts, but for maybe other elected officials or department heads, when those numbers are settled out, to reach out to us and find out, are there priorities in our budget that are less important than wages that we could reallocate funds in our budget to give them an extra half a percent, an extra percent, or whatever it might be? And I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but I, I don't know what a 1% increase for our deputy's contract would be. But let's just say it's $50,000. I was always taught that you budget your plan. You don't plan your budget. So if you want to know what somebody's priorities are, look at their budget. If you came, if the board came to us and said, we're going to give them a 6% and a 3.5%, and I said, you know, if you can give them 7%, we would buy one less car this year. I don't know if that's something that you all are open to in the future. If I'm sitting in your shoes, what it, what it, what it offers you is an opportunity for you not to have to take all of the responsibility of that, that agreed upon amount on your own shoulders. And it gives the elected officials the opportunity to have some skin in the game. And you may come to me and I might say, guys, I'm sorry, we. And you may come to me, and I might say, guys, I'm sorry, we, we don't have any more room, and this is what it is. And, and then I can, you know, bear some of that burden to those, uh, people that are working under me. So again, I don't know if that's ever been done in the, in the past, uh, but if it's something that we could look at in the future, I would certainly, as an elected official, be willing to take a look at our budget and say, okay, you know, let's put our money. We are always asking you for more. What are you willing to, what are, you know, what are we willing to give to give more? And I would just, in the future, maybe like that opportunity to be able to work with y'all and, and, and look and see if that's a, a possibility, so. Any questions about, I guess, the LEC or the process with the marshals or any of that stuff? Or anything as it relates to the sheriff's office? I haven't been here for a few weeks, so. Okay? Thank you all.
I don't know if you can text me the numbers, like what our per-bed rate was this year and what you requested to the marshals? I don't know if that's something you want to say publicly, but...
No.
I wouldn't mind an email, or you give you want to email or text.
I can tell you, I, I believe our current bed rate, it should be public information, I believe it's 75. And I, I will text you. It's more than that. We're requesting more than that.
Thank you. Any other citizen concerns?
Hello, I'm Trevor Brass with the, um, Vice President of the Local ASME Union. And, um, I'm just, I actually spoke before, uh, you supervisors, a few months ago about raises, specifically to the county attorney's office, you may remember that. And so my now boss, who then was PJ, now it's James Loomis, he met with you folks, and you came to an agreement to make an MOU to raise the wages for the attorneys. And it's had some good stuff. I have two new colleagues, one in the felony division, one in the misdemeanor division. Uh, but it's understandable that my brothers and sisters in the union would also probably ask, what about us, the other folks, the other parts? And you probably anticipate this may have been coming. So that's kind of what this is here for, is for the other bargaining units, the courthouse bargaining unit, the other bargaining units that are, you know, not the attorney's office. They're also looking for a 4% merit increase. I think, you know, the reasons are fairly obvious. Again, Consumer Price Index for the Midwest region, you know, 5.6% over the last 12 months. You know, name a private sector employer that has not raised wages, that is still at full staffing. And I think, as the sheriff kind of alluded to as well, when you make your county a more attractive employer, you get more attract, more quality candidates, more men and women to choose from. So the department heads have, you know, better choices, so they can make, and get, find the best man or woman for that job. I, I would like, again, on behalf of the unions, to thank the board for working good faith with, you know, James Loomis to help the county attorneys. We certainly appreciate that. Also for the $1,000 COVID bonus. Again, these things didn't just happen automatically. They happened because there was back and forth negotiation between department heads and you gentlemen, and by work good faith, good things happened. And like I said, Sheriff Sheehan said, you know, wages just go up, he has more candidates for correctional officers. County Attorney's Office, wages go up, we have, uh, new, we're trying to fill up the gaps, starting to fill up the gaps. We were down a third in the county attorney's office for attorneys. But, you know, because of the amount of work, I believe I only have a minute left. It's still been, you know, it's pretty stressful still. Uh, we've been putting a lot of work on the support staff, and they've been taking on some attorney roles. But other departments, though, people will be speaking after me, will kind of fill you in on what's going in their respective departments. I believe Treasury's down, they're about, down a third, and they're very public-facing. They bring in the money that helps run this whole operation. Obviously, the, about 400 men and women that run Woodbury County, you know, they're valuable. They provide great value to the 105,000 citizens of Woodbury County. So, um, supervisors, just, uh, bringing that to your attention, that we'd be asking for a 4% merit increase for the other ASME bargaining units. Thank you.
Hello, Board. Christine Murphy with the Woodbury County Recorder's Office. Members of the Board, we are coming to you publicly to ask for you to put on the agenda for the March 28th board meeting regarding of inflation adjustment for the ASME courthouse, contracted courthouse employees. We understand that all employees are receiving a 2.5% union negotiated annual income, um, employee incre- increase effectively July 1st of 2023, and thank you for that. But today, we are asking for an additional increase of our wages of 4% immediately for an, an inflation adjustment, because it has been brought to our attention that there is still uncommitted money available in the Recovery Plan Fund that could be used for this purpose of wage increases. We, as a bargaining unit, have lost our buying power. Because during the COVID pandemic, there was an increase of 8% inflation. As of now, it is 6% of inflation. The ASME contracted courthouse employees only got 2.5% increase for the union negotiated increase over the past two years as of now. This is why we are addressing this today. We employees would also like to, um, also wanted to note that we were very grateful for the, for the gracious $1,000 COVID stimulus money all received back in January of 2021, but it still does not improve the, the, um, IPR situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pam Jensen. I am also from the Recorder's Office. I just want to say, we are one of the busiest offices, um, in the county, in the courthouse. Not only because of the convenience of the customers, our location of where our office is, our volume of work we have. We are constantly willing to help the public via telephone, via in-person, figure out what their needs are and whom they really need to talk to for that concern, plus our own daily job requirements that we do. Um, we are also one of the only county offices that was open during the COVID pandemic directly with the public. We did not have that opportunity, like some other offices did, to work remotely from home. But there are also several other ASME employee, union contracted, um, here from other offices that I would like to address. Those would be the County Attorney's Office, the Treasury's Office, Building Services, Economic Development, and I apologize if I left any out. We are all different, such as secretaries, maintenance workers, clerks, et cetera. We have our own unique situations, such as overworked and understaffed. But the one thing we all have in common is we are underpaid. This is why we are asking for an increase of 4% for an inflation adjustment. I just want to end with this, that according to the Midwest Consumer Price Index, as Trevor noted, that as of February 2023, area prices rose 5%. This is a 5.6% increase over the past 12 months. Thank you for your time on this.
Thank you. Are there any other citizen concerns? Are there any board concerns?
I did have a, uh, person I know contact me about the driveway over at the, uh, jail site, LEC site. Uh, is a contractor. He's one of the only ones that probably doesn't own a truck, he says, but he has a hard time getting his vehicle in there and just, uh, ruined his suspension. So I don't know if we have an ability to drop off any more gravel or not. I don't, I know he had done that on the road portion before, but, uh, I don't know if it's the contractor's responsibility or who we would contact if Chad or Mark would know, could do something. Okay.
I would anticipate, I haven't read the contract terms.
Sorry.
I don't know what the contractor's terms are for access to the site, so I can inquire of Kenny and see if he needs assistance. If, if they did, and it's permissible, um, we could probably haul him some material and then bill them for it, as we've done in the past.
Is that all? Mr. Reddick?
Uh, no, I, I have something else to, um, so Simco helps to, uh, administer the HMRC, which is the Hazardous Materials Response Commission. And, uh, I'm on that. And then there was the Local Emergency Planning Committee, and for some, they had Jeremy's name. But, uh, these are committees that only meet once a year, and they meet like within a few minutes of each other. And I don't know that we've ever appointed anybody. It's just maybe been something that was kind of assumed because of our other roles. So I don't know if you wanted to be at the...
Yeah, I saw, I can't make that particular one, so...
So I'll just go ahead and go and...
I appreciate it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any other board concerns?
I guess I just want to, I know we're not supposed to respond to items that are not on the agenda, um, so not going to give a fuller response, but I'm just thankful for the respectful way, the measured response, the thoughtfulness of those who approached the board tonight, the hard work that they do each and every day. And so, uh, without getting into policy or much more than that, I'm appreciative of that.
Okay. I guess I'd echo that, and I would just, uh, I don't know if it's a helpful tip or just some perspective for everyone in the public to understand, but the different ways the board in the past has addressed, uh, wages have kind of depended upon whether there's merit involved or, uh, cost of living or recruitment or retention. And those things are kind of all stated at the same time. But from a doing our jobs perspective, we have to kind of center on one of those, uh, as we decide a funding source. And that's why you saw American Rescue Plan Act funds being mentioned for, uh, retention efforts, and you've seen merit, uh, mentioned for other efforts. And so kind of a cohesive, um, logic, you know, is helpful for everyone involved in the board, because we can't necessarily go to, uh, the use of ARPA for retention if it's, it's a merit increase. That's just something I, I would like everyone to understand about the boards. As we try and find avenues to address different things, we do have to center our arguments on some, on, on whether it's a, you know, merit, inflation, what have you, so. Any other board concerns? See everyone back next week. We're adjourned.